This conference will now be recorded.
Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, September 16th, 2021, beginning at 5:31 PM with executive session as prescribed by VTC, a government code section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note, we have all of our council members in attendance. Executive session, we will convene into a closed executive session pursuant to sections 551 dot 071, advice of counsel, 551 dot 072, real property, 551 dot 074 personnel, section 551 dot 087 economic development, Texas government code and section 1 dot 05, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct regarding A consultation with legal counsel and possible actions concerning any regular meeting agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said item, and that is as needed. B consultation with legal counsel regarding pending complaints against Rob Durbin, which is Texas government code section 551 dot 071, and we convene at 5:33 PM.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we reconvene. We reconvene from recess into open session at 6:30 PM, and we will now move into our regular scheduled session, open session. We reconvene from executive session to act as deemed appropriate in city councils discretion regarding. Eight, there was. We did not discuss anything on the agenda in A, and then B, we discussed.
Attorney.
Attorney-client privilege. With our attorney for section B, and that's all that happened in executive session. So now we go into our open session, we will start with the pledge allegiance to the US and the Texas flag. Start with the US. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honored and Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one entity, one indivisible. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, citizen comments, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. I have one citizen who has signed up, that is Mr. Paul Roberts. If you would, please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, sir, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. I have here a copy of government code title five, chapter 551, I'd like to hand out to each of you. Mr. Mayor, council, in 2019, I began lobbying this council to broadcast all council, not just the council meetings, but also the committees and the commission meetings, you'll recall, and have them uploaded to the YouTube channel. Thank you for accomplishing that earlier this year. I think it's great for transparency in government, something I'm very passionate about. Since then, we've had COVID, and COVID has brought to light virtual meetings for the council, the committees, and the commissions. It has shown us the value of hybrid meetings. Hybrid meetings keep our staff, council, committee, commission members safe, especially those who are high risk. They also keep the public safe. There's also the benefit of public participation. That same participation which has contributed to better work products coming from not just this council, but various committees and commissions. We must continue with hybrid meetings for council committees and commissions. I'd like to see that happen. There are members of various committees and commissions in our town who are in that high-risk demographic. If they have to come to the committee, if they have to come to the meeting and sit up here, they're potentially putting themselves at risk. That's the same thing with our citizens, who might otherwise come, but won't because they don't want to put themselves in that position. So I would like to ask the council and staff to please find a way to do hybrid meetings, not just for the city council, but for the committees and commissions as well. Thank you.
Two months, the city council has approved a buy board purchase that will redo our entire video teleconferencing abilities in this room, and we have also hired an outside third party that will do our meetings and record them with all kinds of ADA-type stuff and stuff. So what you're asking for is already pretty much underway. So as far as the actual holding of the meetings, we will look at this and see that we can comply, but we will have the capabilities. In the past, some of that has been the reason why we haven't been able to meet it, but we are working on it, so.
Very glad to hear that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that there were one caveat, that our limitation under the Open Meetings Act, if you want to hold a hybrid meeting, you have to have a quorum of the body present at the physical location. So it would mean that a quorum of that commission or committee be present. You also have a limitation requirement that every member who's participating remotely can be seen and heard. You have to have audio and video. Right now, our limitation is those folks who would participate on a video conference don't necessarily have all of the equipment that's necessary. So that's something that would have to be investigated if that were to be pursued.
Yeah, so basically, it's not going to happen automatically, but we're working on it. All right. That is the only person that I have signed up for citizen comments. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who would like to say something? What, yes?
Our city of Travis Drive. I would just like to add also, when you're doing these meetings, whoever's sitting on this side of the room cannot be heard at all in the recordings. So I don't know, there was a meeting, I think your meeting, and it had, you know. So whoever's sitting over there needs to make sure their mic, and that's it, thanks.
All right, we will work on that when we get our better equipment, thank you. Anybody else? Let's see, do I have anybody in the audience? I do not, I have a couple of people that signed up for speak on a specific agenda items. So just note, if you signed up for those items, you will be called when we get to that agenda item. All right, we will move on to the next item. And that is items of community interest pursuant to Texas government code section 551 dot 0415. The city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude and condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, and proclamations, reminders regarding city council events, reminders regarding community events, and health and safety announcements. City council events, if you weren't aware from our last meeting, we have counseled canceled the October 7th meeting because I believe all of our council members will be at the TML conference in Houston, as well as several of our staff members. So we will not have the October 7th regularly scheduled meeting. Let's see. We have no holidays coming up, no community events coming up.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a thanks that goes out to our PIO, Meredith Kunch, who helped me with the 9/11 video that we shot, and it's on Facebook. It's not on our city webpage, but it is on our city Facebook page. I thank her for helping me with that. And that's all that I have, did you have something?
Yes, Chamber of Commerce is having their annual golf tournament on October 1st. Anyone that's interested, you can go to the Chamber of Commerce site, and they have information on the tournament and sign up paperwork. City will be represented by four members of the council. We're going to call ourselves the Masters of, no, the.
Weapons of.
Weapons, yeah, weapons of grass destruction. So would encourage anyone that likes to play golf to come out and join the Chamber of Commerce. This is one of their big fundraisers. So come out and support our businesses in our chamber.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, I do have one item. The Lago Vista and Port Venture Lions Clubs will be having another blood drive, October 16th. I'll be posting on social media here shortly, but you have a full month to get signed up.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Council Marion. Oh, all right, I see, go ahead, Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let folks in the community know that October is dark sky month, and to make our citizens aware of a couple of upcoming events that our Lago Vista Starry Skies folks are participating in. Yes, sir, I know you have a proclamation. First is the star party that is going to be held at Sunset Park on October the 9th. And the second is that the Lago Vista Starry Skies Committee will have folks on hand at the Lago Vista Farmers Market on October the 17th, from 10 to 2. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, yes, I was saving some of that to the end, but I couldn't remember the date of the party, so thank you for doing that. Council Prince.
Thank you, Mayor, you mentioned that the regular city council meeting first week of October has been canceled. I wonder if it would be good to mention the two special call meetings that are coming up next week for public awareness of those, if you don't mind.
Sure, if I can remember them all, we have the 22nd, the 23rd. 27th? 27th.
Yeah.
Special call meetings on the 22nd, 23rd, and 27th. So the 23rd and 27th are budget meetings. Whether we add anything to those as far as regular agenda items, I do not know yet, but we'll see. Right now, they're just budget meetings. Anybody else? All right, before I get to the citizens, I'm going to piggyback on Council Marion's item of community interest, and that is the Starry Skies and Dark Skies events. As she said, there is going to be a star watch party out at the Sunset Park on October 9th. So anybody that would like to join the star party on the 9th, please do so. But I have here a proclamation of the city of Lago Vista proclaiming October as Hill Country Night Sky Month. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of star-filled skies are the heritage of all humankind and locally to the inhabitants of Lago Vista and are therefore worthy of celebration. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a star-filled night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and may encourage interest in science and nature, especially among young people. And whereas the opportunity to view star-filled skies attracts tourists to our region and therefore economic benefit to Lago Vista. And whereas preserving the rich historic heritage and starry night skies of Lago Vista is important to its citizens. And whereas light pollution, which is wasted light that performs no function or task, and artificial light that goes where it is not supposed to go, is created by glare, light trespass, sky glow, and overlighting. And whereas light pollution wastes natural resources amounting to at least $2 billion per year and contributes to diminished American energy independence. And whereas the historical view of the night skies has been eroding in many nearby areas, and generations are growing up with limited, if any, view of the wonders of the universe. And whereas the influx of people into the Texas Hill Country region and the accompanying light pollution from area lighting fixtures has been steadily on the rise. And whereas solving the problem of light pollution involves making better use of outdoor lighting to direct light down to where it is needed instead of upward into the sky, putting outdoor lights on timers and using outdoor lighting only where necessary. And whereas Hill Country communities are increasingly dedicated to the preservation of the region's night skies as evidenced by the frequent educational activities conducted in our region and by the increasing number of places in our region recognized as international dark sky places by the International Dark Sky Association, including Enchanted Rock State Natural Area, South Lano State Park, the city of Dripping Springs, the Wimberly Valley, the city of Fredericksburg, the city of Horseshoe Bay, Ubar U Camp and Retreat Center, River Hills Neighborhood of Travis County, and Lost Creek Neighborhood of Travis County. And whereas this regional effort and the preservation and celebration of our night skies is worthy of a month-long celebration. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of Lago Vista, Texas, October shall hereafter be known as Hill Country Night Sky Month in Lago Vista, Travis County, Texas. And that the city council encourages city citizens to enjoy the night sky and to participate in the Lago Vista Starry Skies and the Hill Country regions events and programs, celebrating the night sky and promoting the ways in which communities are working to preserve it. And that the city council encourages citizens to learn about light pollution, why it matters, night sky-friendly lighting and lighting regulations, and to implement practices and lighting improvements that will reduce light pollution, thereby preserving our night skies. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, to be affixed this 16th day of September 2021. Signed, Ed Tidwell, Mayor. All right. Mr. Roberts, I believe you had something that you would like to add.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have here for you guys, another handout. This is, I'll just state what it is first. This is from Charter Communications. They are participating in the FCC's Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, which launched in May. The program provides a credit of up to $50 per month for eligible participants towards spectrum internet service. This is a flyer for that, that the city can maybe make available up at the front window.
Not sure we're allowed to promote businesses in our council meetings, but.
Well, it's part of subsidizing people who've been economically adversely affected economically by COVID. So it's grant money that's going to them, and it's subsidizing these discounts to the citizens for broadband internet service, is the idea behind it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and last thing is October 30th, up at Rusty Allen Airport is Young Eagles Day. Do you guys know what Young Eagles Day is? Young Eagles Day is where children can be signed up by their parents and get free introductory airplane rides, little 20-minute rides up around Lago Vista. So for those at home watching this, the person to contact is Robert Mitchie. His phone number, which you'll appreciate here, is 512-507-6521. And I'm giving a flyer to you guys, so y'all.
Sir?
Thank you.
Do they have a pancake breakfast this year?
I don't. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I know last year they had the pancake breakfast, and it's really cool. I know last year, too, Lone Star Helicopters was operating there, and for $20 donations, you get to fly around in a helicopter, do a quick run, like 100 feet above Lake Travis. It's an exciting thing, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other items of community interest? All right, we will move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, we have the approval of August 2nd, 2021, and August 4th, 2021, special call meeting minutes. Number four, approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Lago Vista and the city of Jonestown for reciprocal municipal court assistance services. And I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have the motion in the second, I believe. Council Davila was first on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, consent agenda is approved unanimous. All right. We are going to hold off on number five right now. It will be brought back at a later time, and we're going to move into our action items. And we will go to number six, which is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a roll call vote on adoption of a proposal to set a 2021 tax rate of 0.6070 for the city of Lago Vista and schedule public hearings and take necessary action. Let's see here. I did not pull this out. All right, notice is hereby given that the city of Lago Vista, Texas, is conducting a public hearing September 27th, 2021, at 6:30 PM to receive citizen comments and views regarding the proposed city of Lago Vista budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022, commencing on October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $440,722, or 6.007427%. And of that amount, $526,944.34 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. A rate of 0.6070 per $100 valuation has been proposed by the governing body of the city of Lago Vista. Proposed tax rate, .6070 per 100. Our no new revenue tax rate is .06070 per 100. The voter approval tax rate is 0.6135 per $100. The no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate for the 2021 tax year that will raise the amount of property tax revenue for the city of Lago Vista from the same properties in both the 2020 tax year and the 2021 tax year. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate that the city of Lago Vista may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means that the city of Lago Vista is not proposing to increase property taxes for the 2021 tax year. The proposed tax rate is also not greater than the voter approval tax rate. As a result, the city of Lago Vista is not required to hold an election to seek voter approval of the rate. This approval requires a roll call of the city council to approve a not-to-exceed rate of 0.6070 per $100 valuation. If approved, hearing and approval of the budget on September 27th, 2021. If denied, additional meetings will be required to gain approval for our budget. Is there anything staff would like to add to this?
Yes, Mayor, so I want to make sure that everybody knows that we have been doing our budget workshops frequently in the past probably month. The council, after several of those budget workshops, decided that through the items that they are approving, hopefully on September 27th, that this tax rate will get us what we needed. It also does have some surplus in the general fund, which is why we don't feel it is necessary to go to the taxpayers for an approval of a tax rate for an election. So we are staying at that no new revenue rate. Because of appraisals, and the appraisals being higher this year, that does bring in more of an ante l'orum tax increase than it did last year, even though we will be reducing that taxable value by almost four cents.
Got you, all right. I have one question, that's just a clarification. In the summary, it says budget will raise more total property tax by 440,000, and then it says, and of that amount, 526. How can the 526,000 be more than the 440,000? What am I not reading?
You're not missing anything. So because of the way, this is exact language that goes into our public hearing notice for the newspaper. It is always backwards, it seems like, but it is the way the language has to be noticed. So in other words, we had 440,000 of taxable value last year of an increase from our taxes, and this year, we actually have more, like I said, because of the appraisal value, even though we're taking the tax rate down. But the way it has to be noticed in our public hearing, it has a specific language that we have to use, and bar none, it is always confusing, which is why I made that comment earlier so that I make sure that everybody understands. It is not that we're raising the tax rate anymore, we're actually lowering it, but because of our appraisals, we are getting that benefit and that increase. Also with House Bill number two, the fact that you cannot raise anything above 3.5%. We still are pretty lucky that we can fund all of our programs and be able to run our O and M, which is our operations and maintenance off of that.
All right, thank you. So the amount actually. So the amount actually refers to total property, not the increase. I get it. Okay. Questions from council? Good.
Do you need a roll call?
All right. Stand by. I'm looking at, I'm looking at all my little squares to see if Councilor Prince or Marion have their hands up. Councilor Prince?
I just, the language here is is pretty convoluted that the state has put upon us, right? And so I think it, from from my perspective, it may be beneficial for citizens to say that an individual property owner, depending on the assessed value that they get this year, may see some slight increase or decrease in their taxes. On average, across all of our city, the average amount of taxes that's coming in will be unchanged. So the assessed rates go up, the tax rate goes down, the total paid by all of our citizens year over year should be consistent. That's that's the first thing. And then the second thing is that because we are in such a growth phase, there's a lot of new property bringing in new revenue. So our our property tax dollars that we collect will be larger than last year, but from individual citizens' perspective, it should be about the same with slight variation from house to house, depending on what the Travis County does in the assessed value of an individual homeowner's property. So I I hope that's that's helpful. The the good news is that on average, taxes are not going up. And that's the action that council presumably will be taking here in a few minutes.
Thank you very much for doing that. I would like to add there. When you're, for the citizens out there, when you're looking, don't forget there's other taxing entities. So whereas the city itself is reducing the tax rate to try and keep property taxes, overall taxes, the same as it was the previous year, that doesn't necessarily apply to other entities. So we have Travis County, we have ESD one, ESD seven. We have the hospital district and your school district. So you know, your overall tax bill may go up. But as far as the city, you you know, look at that one line item as far as the city to see what your taxes have done as far as your city adverum taxes. Anybody else?
Mayor, may I say something?
You sure may.
I want to add something that may help clarify for those who are a little bit confused too. The way it's read, the way it's worded actually does make a little bit of sense. In the biggest picture, if it weren't for all of the new property that was added this last year, the actual, all the regular properties that were already here in existence went backwards. We would have lost property value. But over eighty-two million dollar, there's over eighty-two million dollars worth of new property added to the tax roll. That was part of what drove back the tech, the need to, for the, how we set the tax rate to begin with, because if we kept it at six four seven five, it was going to be a lot more and then we would be going out for vote and all of that. So the new property is what's really driving all of this new revenue. So that statement that that we've got four hundred thousand more coming in this year over last is a true one. But because of all that new revenue, it is pushing us to having five hundred and twenty-six thousand of the four hundred thousand, which doesn't make sense, but is from all that new property.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council staff? Right. Is there anybody in the audience? I did not have anybody sign up for this agenda item. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment to council? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed. See, I have to have a motion first, right?
Do you have to close the public hearing first?
It's not a public hearing. The public hearing will be held September 27th.
Gotcha.
That was just an announcement of an upcoming public hearing.
Gotcha.
So I will need a motion and then we'll proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt proposed rate of point six zero seven zero for the City of Lago Vista and schedule public hearing and take the necessary action.
A second. All right, I have the motion in the second. The Councilor Weatherly. Do I go down the list or does Sandra do that?
Sandra is going to do a roll call.
All right.
Williams.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Davila.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Weatherly.
Aye.
Prince.
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye. All right. Roll call vote has been taken and the rate of zero point six zero seven zero per one hundred has been adopted unanimous. As proposed, proposed rate, proposed has been approved unanimously. All right, and we go to number seven. Discussion, consideration, and possible approval to pursue thirty thousand, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars Corona virus aid relief and economic security act grant. The CARES Act is a grant program administered by the Federal Aviation Administration. The FAA developed the process, parameters, and funding amounts for the program. As a block grant state, Tech dot will receive funding from the FAA and airports will then receive grants via Tech dot. Title twelve of Division B of the CARES Act provides approximately ten billion dollars to support U.S. airports experiencing servers experiencing, I think that's supposed to be severe economic disruption caused by the COVID-19 public health emergency. This funding will be distributed to airports to prevent, prepare for the response to the impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency. The period of performance for the CARES Act grant is four years. Grants for operating expenses may not include activities prior to January 20th, 2020. Typical uses of the grant include payroll, debt service, utility expenses, service contracts, and supplies. If approved, this will assist the City of Lago Vista in reimbursing Rusty Allen Airport cost for related to operations, payroll, debt services, utility services, service contract, and supplies. If denied, it's non-applicable. Is there anything that staff would like to add to this? All right. Questions, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Weatherly.
If we can get thirty thousand dollars from the coronavirus aid, this, this to me is a no-brainer. This is thirty thousand dollars we can use.
Yeah, we did lose quite a bit of traffic because of the shutdown to our airport, so. Yeah. Anybody else? Councilors Prince, Marion? No. All right. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the staff pursuing the thirty thousand coronavirus aid relief and economic security act grant. Second.
Second.
All right. I have the motion and the second by Councilor Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. See if we can get that great. And number eight, discussion, consideration, and possible action to reject the 2021 roadway rehab project bids. The city recently completed the bid opening for the 2021 roadway rehab project held on August 17th, 2021, at 11:00 AM. The proposed improvements consisted of paving twenty-eight different city streets consisting of approximately one hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred yards. There were three companies that bid on the rehab projects. Lone Star Paving offered the lowest qualified base bid at one million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. And they added a bid alternate of two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents. You can see the tabulation bids included in the packet. City staff has determined that this construction company has constructed many similar projects around the central Texas area. Although the review of the tabulated bids indicates the lower, the low bidder provided amounts that were competitive, the city does not have adequate remaining funds to cover the cost of this project estimated at one point nine seven seven million, including the added alternate. It is staff recommendation to the city council to reject all bids received for the 2021 street rehab project due to a lack of funding for the project. Local government code states under section two five two dot zero four three F that the governing body of the city may reject any and all bids. The local government code under subchapter B also allows council to specifically authorize a delegate authorize a delegate the authority to reject the bids. Staff will work again early in the new budget year to rebid this project. The new twenty-one, twenty-two CIP street project, street budget is proposed at one point nine seven seven million. If approved, staff will inform all bidders, the bids have been rejected. A new bid process will begin in FY 2021, 22 of the street capital improvement projects. Staff will work to find a funding, if denied, staff will work to find a funding source to complete the project. Is there anything staff would like to add to this?
Yes, sir. Even though we are asking to reject this bid project, then this rehab project bid is because this is the only appropriate way to go about releasing the bids that were brought in by sales because we do not have that funding source. There were nine streets that were rehabbed this year, including Loma Ford, as you know, who took a really hard hit after the winter storm. But there were eight additional streets that were rehabbed and we still continue to have one point nine in the CIP for next year.
Okay, so my question. What funding for the 2021 fiscal year do we have remaining? We don't have enough for this, but how much do we have out there?
Well, if we were going to do this project, because we did it, we would need to have at least secured the one point eight. We do not have anywhere near that. There are some budget amendments that we will be bringing to the council during our budget meeting on the 27th that will sure up the numbers. There were several purchases that were made that were not budgeted, so it takes us into a situation that we are getting extremely dangerous at the end of the year. We also do not have a ninety day reserve, which is what we intend to have. And so if we were to bid these projects, we would continue to take that ninety day reserve lower.
Okay. So twenty-eight streets that we had on our list for this year will be pushed into next year. How does that affect? How many streets do we have scheduled for next year and how's this going to affect overall?
I think it was thirty-two in the overlay. I mean, in the rehab, but we're double checking.
So does that mean we're going to do fifty?
No, it means that they will be pushed out another year. And remember, this was unforeseen circumstances also with Loma Ford, so that that is also an underpiece to this puzzle.
Anybody else? Questions? Council? Councilor Prince?
The city manager and I had a private conversation, so you know, I'm aware of the situation. I I do want to voice that it's 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 very disappointing. You know, that the council, prior to even last year's election, so prior to to myself and others, the others that are new joining the council, the direction was to make major progress on on roads. Now, unfortunately, through the previous city manager, the interim city manager, and you know, with the storm, as mentioned, a combination of all of those things, it didn't happen. But this council has also been very clear that we want to continue investing at a strong rate in repairing roads. And so while I'm, while I'm really disappointed that, you know, other than the Loma Ford plus eight or nine, whatever the number is, we really missed the mark this year, I want to encourage us to, you know, hit the mark in the coming year of accomplishing to the road plan. So so that's, that's the first thing that I would say. And then I I think it would be, it would be helpful to have some discussion to say, you know, where was that money spent? So we have a summary for council and for citizens, where was that money spent that got us in this position? And my understanding is it was all spent on things that were approved by council. It was just the way the process went. Or we're now a bit surprised frankly that that we're not able to do the road plan. And so I think council made decisions and I, you know, I was part of some of those decisions. Council made decisions to approve some spending that ended up undermining the spending for the road plan. And so hopefully, you know, going forward, as we make budget decisions through the process of the year, we can be better informed as to the implications of those budget decisions and whether there's negative impact on other projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just say that I agree with everything really that Councilor Prince just shared. But I had a question and then a comment. There was some conversation at a council meeting a few months ago about, from Eric Blay and staff, about how there's kind of like a sweet spot of time at which it's best to complete repairs to roads and to do road work in general. So my my comment is, hopefully, we can kind of plan things out strategically now so that we're the city's able to get the 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 street rehabbing done during the time at which staff have identified as kind of that best time to do so. And then the question I have is, do you happen to know Ms. Livinga? How quickly after the new budget cycle kicks in can a new RFP be put out? And how long do you anticipate that taking? So like, how far into this new budget cycle do you think we would potentially have to wait before any of this work might be able to be started?
Thank you, Councilor Marion. So we were, all of us are anxiously wanting to get those RFPs out as soon as possible after the new budget year. That doesn't mean that once we have those bids come in and we award the bids, as you just alluded to, there's a sweet spot, there is a time because of the jobs that you're doing, the projects under certain weather conditions, it's not advisable to do some of those. And so we'll make sure that we're trying not to compromise any of the work that's being done for the taxpayers' dollars by doing those projects when it's not advisable due to weather. So even though we may have the contract awarded, there will be times where there will not be work done because we will be getting into the colder times and also the rainy season for us. And those all have an impact. So most of the time, those things start getting conducted during the springtime. But that doesn't mean that we cannot go ahead and award the project so that we can get scheduled sooner because there are some scheduling issues that also have been occurring due to materials becoming available. And I'll let Blay, if you have anything else to add to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So typically, you don't want to have projects being under construction over winter. One of the things that makes you One of the things that makes it challenging is that if you do want to, if you do award a contract before winter time. You do want to make sure that you're getting done before winter. Because what contractors want to do in winter time, they don't have a lot of projects and they'll want to get working on your project. You don't want that to happen. So typically what we've done in the past is we either awarded early fall, which we're going to look at it, see if we can afford that. Or maybe cut it back up to a smaller project that we can afford. Or award it earlier in the spring and then do the work that way. The challenge with awarding in the spring is that you run the risk of going over winter and who knows what happens in the streets over winter. So that's, that's something that we're going to look at, see what we can afford and see what the best time to do is, is. And the good thing is that the drainage and a lot of the other prep work has already been down for this set of streets. So that's not something that we'll hold.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Sullivan.
Mayor, I was just going to say, I believe we've got a document on our website that shows our kind of five-day-year plan or whatever. I found that extremely helpful and whenever people, citizens ask me, I point into that. I would just suggest as we realize that we're going to push some of these back, that we redo that, update it and get it out on the website.
If I can piggyback on that, can we make that form? Show by annual instead of alphabetical? Because. Okay. Last time I looked, it was still alphabetical. So I'm going to express just some disappointment here. If y'all recall, March and April. I told you all this was happening. We did not have the funding. We put all our street projects, we put our park project, we put everything on hold. Because I told you all in, in the spring that we did not have the money to complete all of our projects this year. We redid the parks. Program to, you know, to meet the grant. And we cut it down to the minimum of things that we needed to get done, which is the restrooms and the street access. I had, I knew we had so much, a certain amount of money to spend before we got down to the ninety-day reserves. I didn't think we had enough to complete everything, but you know, going into July, when we decided we wanted to move forward with these twenty-eight streets. I was feeling hopeful. That maybe we could get them done. But now seeing that, you know, the way the bids have come in and, you know, I'm disappointed that we're unable to complete. But I had a feeling in March and April, looking at the numbers, this is where we were going to end up at the end of the fiscal year. As disappointing as it is. I think the fact that we want to keep our reserves at that ninety D level is very important. So. You know, we're pushing some of our project streets back. I think it's a good decision financially for us. So I'm disappointed. Of course, we all know the winter storm had a huge effect on, on our budget. A lot of the budget amendments and things that have brought to us that ate into our general fund reserves are because of that winter storm. So it is what it is, but it's disappointing. Yes, Councilor Sullivan.
A question, a comment. The question is, it sounded like we did have some funds. Was there any consideration to cutting back the bid? To just the things that we thought we could have afforded and gotten that work done?
I believe the way we released the bid, it was to do all of those streets. I'm not sure how that bid was.
What I'm asking is, could we have cut that bid back to do just the streets that?
Depending on how that bid was released.
Right. So yes and no. So we did issue the bid with a base bid and added bid alternates. So the base bid was based on what we thought we could afford at the time and based on talking to the contractor. And contractor said, hey, there are bids are going up or quantities or materials are going up ten to twenty percent. So that's how we based that on, but it came out to be a little bit more than what we thought. Splitting that up, we tried to butcher that up and split it up. It's actually not the proper way to do that, the way these bids are issued. We did look at it. One thing we can do it is in the fall, just issue it as a much smaller bid, maybe just only ten streets. Ten core streets that we were originally doing. And just do that and do the, the rest of them in the spring. So that's something that we can possibly do.
Okay. And then the comment that I want to make is, listen, I get it, the storm threw us for a loop. They were spending money on things we didn't anticipate. But I pointed this out before and I pointed it again. Last year, when we went through the budget cycle, I'm sorry, when the council went through, because I was not on council at the time. There was a conscious decision that was made to spend down below the normal ninety-day reserve. Okay? It was a conscious decision. I even got up as a citizen and made a comment about it. And it was what the council wanted to do and that's what was done. So there can be disappointment, but we all have to recognize that was a conscious decision made by the council to go that direction.
On your, about the bid process. I was kind of looking at that. I think the way it's done right now. If we wanted to change it, we have to go back and reject all of this. And then we could go back and say, let's do, only do ten streets or fifteen streets, whatever. But because of the timing, we're in, we're in September. There's no, there's no way we could do an RFP in this FY, so.
And the other thing, the other thing, Lomenford, we had to amend that, you know.
Totally.
That, that doubled what we had to do in order to complete Lomenford. We took it from one process to another process to correct that situation. So that took a chunk of money away. So.
Councilor Prince?
So just a couple of comments on the finance and I, you know, I reiterate right what Mr. Sullivan said. I just, it's really disappointing the way we got here. So let's, let's not do it again next year, right? Let's make sure we made good progress on the streets. Couple of things on a dollar wise. So Lomenford absolutely did increase. The plan had been eight hundred thousand. The actual, which we approved in council, was an increase of five hundred thousand, one point three. So from the original plan, there was a lot of money still left in that street fund. So you can't blame it all on the Lomenford storm. That was a piece of it. Not, it was not the whole thing. And then secondly, you know, I want to say. If I'm a citizen sitting here and saying, oh, we're, you're, we're getting down to this ninety-day reserve and we're, you know, not able to pay for any of the street repairs. It sounds like the city's in financial straits here, right? And I'm looking at the most recent monthly report. And, you know, we've got, of course, we have money in the utility fund. We have money over there. But even inside of the operated, the general fund, we've got a general fund reserve of, according to the July statement, two point one million. And another million in real estate, which also, my understanding is really lives in the general fund. So we've got some money in the general fund. Now, maybe in fact prudent to reject this bid, start over, do it again in the new fiscal year. But it's not like we're about to run out of money and not able to pay our employees. At least that's the way I look at books. We might need to move some money out of reserve that we hadn't. Sounds like the prudent action here is. Allowing us to avoid money out of reserve. We've got money. So it's not like, you know, we're in danger of not, not meeting our commitments here. To me, this is more about, let's redo the bid, do it right, get it going fast, get it in a, you know, a bulk rebid. We're near the end of the fiscal year anyway, so let's, let's, let's just kind of hit a reset button and do it again. And, and get the process going efficiently and, and quickly.
Thank you. Anybody else, Council? All right, is there, I did not have any citizens signed up for this agenda item. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Yes, Ms. Teal, you're recognized.
I may be barking up the wrong tree here, but it's my understanding that road impact fees could be used for any road that is labeled as a collector. Or arterial on the recently adopted thoroughfare plan. If this is the case, and there really is an appetite to fix the crumbling roads in Lago Vista. Then it seems like it would be prudent to spend all of the roadway impact fees to repair the existing collector and arterial roads. Then the city could use that one point nine seven million maintenance budget that's being discussed in this item to fix smaller existing roads. That can be maintained with, that cannot be maintained with impact fees. I looked over the roads that need rehabbing in the bid document for this item, item. And compared it to the adopted thoroughfare plan. The following roads that need rehabbing are shown as arterial, arterial or collector on this map. Dawn, Barque Ranch, Ridgeview and Paseo de Baca. If I understand the law correctly, that road impact fees may be used for the arterial and collectors. Then using the bid from Lone Star Paving, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that project could be shaved off. And road impact fees could be used for their maintenance.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we're going to be discussing the. Road impact fees in the later agenda items. So I think we'll wait till we get to that agenda item to actually address the road impact fees. Yes, Mr. Haas, do you have something on this? Let's try to, let's try to keep this to this actual. Bid rejection as opposed to getting into discussion on any other streets.
Can't hear you.
Cannot hear you.
We can't hear you, Eddie. I believe he was just going to say that impact fees cannot be used for maintenance. They can only be used to add capacity.
All right. Well, thank you. We're going to try and keep it to this actual item and then we'll discuss. Those things that later on in the, in the council meeting. Does anybody have anything on the actual bid rejection that they would like to comment on? All right. I will bring it back to council then for possible, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we reject the twenty-twenty-one roadway rehab project bids.
All right. I have a motion and a second by Council Weatherly. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries you now. All right, we go to number nine. Discussion and possible action on selecting survey consultant for the city of Lago Vista. And authorize city manager to negotiate and execute a contract price and scope of work. On July first of this year, the city issued a request for qualifications, RFQ. To select a surveying firm to provide surveying, plating and other miscellaneous surveying services for the city. Four statements of qualifications were received by the August tenth deadline. The RFQ was advertised and reviewed according to Texas Local Code twenty-two fifty-four and twenty-two sixty-nine. In the last year, the city has spent significant money towards surveying services. It is possible that moving forward, this pattern will continue. And as such, it is appropriate to select a surveyor based on qualifications first. And then negotiate a contract thereafter for any individual project. Last year, the city selected a geotechnical engineering as well as a utility engineering firm. On qualifications-based selection. The statement of qualifications were received by July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Staff reviewed their submittal and determined that Land Design Services Incorporated, LSI. Is the most qualified for the city's asks. The recommended firm has performed similar work for other similar projects in our city and surrounding areas. The SOQs were received from Hoff, Com Finley and Sherwood Survey. The city, as part of, as part of the many ongoing CIP projects and other miscellaneous projects, needs surveying services. Typically, these services require the oversight of a Texas-registered land surveyor. And as such, they are selected first based on the qualifications, then a price is agreed upon. If any of the pricing exceeds the state limit, that survey will be presented before council for approval. Selected, the city will sign a contract and issue task orders. To the consultant for individual projects after agreeing on a task order scope and cost. Typically, such contracts last for a period of two to three years and can be amended for additional years. Council has the option to select staff-recommended consultant, select another consultant from the list, or reissue the RFQ. See the attached sample of the SOQ. If approved, the city will start the process of establishing a scope of work and processing a contract. If denied, the city will not start the process and will look for council direction procurement of such services. Is there anything staff would like to add to this? No, sir. All right. I will read on down here. Into funding source, funding will be budgeted for each CIP project. Just to make that note. All right. Comments? Yes, Councilor Prince?
So if I'm understanding this right, this is all about selecting one company out of four who applied. And then individual jobs will be price negotiated later. And I'm, I'm wondering, is there some reason why we would limit our relationship to having one surveying company? It would seem, first of all, you know, the word out on the street is it's hard to get the surveying guys to get the work done. They're so busy. So it seems like having more than one option would be helpful to city staff. And then presumably as, you know, individual tasks come up, if, if there's only one person doing it, they're going to. Try to push each individual job as close to the legal state limit as they can. So I'm, I'm wondering what the logic is for narrowing down to a single company at this point, just based on statement of qualification. Rather than say, you know, engaging two companies and having an open contract with, with both of them.
Mayor, Council, good question. So the city can enter into more than one surveyor as, to provide survey services to the city. One of the things we looked at is, we don't foresee having that much work like we do for other engineered work, such as utility projects. To warrant more than one surveyor. But we may have significant amount of work to where we do want to go through the procurement process. First and then do the job. So the only reason we only recommend one is we just don't think there's going to be that large of an amount of work to share amongst. One, two or three, even four. So we do have long-term contracts with four or five engineering contracts. Engineering firms, one of them being Frisian Nichols, we're here today. Such as in other firms like Com Finley and. Walker Partners, I believe their contract might have expired. So it is possible, just may not be worth our effort or their effort to have an actual contract out there.
All right. Thank you.
It is also that we want to qualify our surveyor. And when we went through this process, we did just that. So we want to make sure that we have a qualified surveyor out there. It also is good procurement practice so that it doesn't look like if we had several surveyors, that we were splitting our jobs, having a contract. And being able to rely when we're calling for service from somebody who's qualified is just good procurement practice.
Is there also the opportunity that because we're dedicating our work to one firm, we'll get a priority with that firm potentially to get our work done versus getting sliding?
It's not in the contract, but I can't say that they wouldn't do that particular thing and that we are giving them the primary.
Councilor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I just wanted to know if city staff might be able to speak to a couple of things. The first being, in the first paragraph of the executive summary, it's noted that the city has spent significant money towards surveying research, surveying services. And I was just curious if someone on staff might be able to give us an idea of what we mean by significant money. And then there's a little bit of lag time between when the statement of qualifications were received. And when we're seeing this on the agenda, and I thought maybe when someone might be able to speak to any reason for the delay there. And then the last question I have is. And then the last question I have is really probably just more of a clarification. I'm just making sure that I'm understanding that really the purpose of this is just to make sure that we're employing good procurement practice. It's really not intended to necessarily save money by going with a dedicated company. And that's, that's my three questions. Thank you.
Council Marion, you are correct that it will not save money. It is just for good practice. I am looking and I can assure you that my finance director is looking as well, but I know that in 2018, when we say significant, it was quite a bit. I want to say that it was somewhere in the, I want to say it was 85,000 or more in 2018. In 2019, it was not as much, but knowing the CIP projects that are coming up for 2122, it is advisable that we secure that just in case it does go above the 50,000. We have a contract and that we are also having a qualified surveyor doing the work. Did I miss one of your questions?
Delay.
I do not think so. I think that was everything. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What you'd ask about the time, the July 20th was with the, when the SOQs were received and it's September, she was wanting to know why.
I'm going to let.
I thought she answered that. I'm sorry.
I'm going to let Eric Delight answer that.
That's a good question, Mayor Council. One of the things that happened around that time was we were trying to get our CIP done and of course Tracy started and also at the same time, we were really trying to beat out as best as we could, the street rehab project so that we could try to get it done this year. That obviously didn't happen. So that's the main reason why the delay from the opening of the SOQ is since we're stating qualifications, opening those up and coming to council.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I did not have anybody sign up for this one on the citizens. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve LSI as the survey contractor and authorize the city staff to negotiate and execute contract.
Second. All right. I have the motion and a second from Council Williams. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. And we go to number 10. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Resolution Number 21-1898, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, adopting an official newspaper for the city of Lago Vista. Texas Government Code Section 52 dot 013B requires publication of ordinances in the municipality's official newspaper if the city's charter does not provide another method for such publication. The publisher of the Hill Country News has provided confirmation that the paper meets the criteria to be the official newspaper of the city of Lago Vista. Is there anything staff would like to add to this?
It is required that we actually note an official newspaper for our publications. That is so that the public knows where they can look specifically if we were to publish. We do have the ability, if Hill Country News does not meet a timeline and we need to get a publication out, we can use an alternate. Normally, that is the statesman that we use. We try not to use that if necessary, just because of the cost. But in order for us to comply with what the state law says in the code, we do have to designate a primary and we are choosing to designate Hill Country. It is the closest to us since we do not have a newspaper in our community and it also is a physically mindful approach to cost.
Got it. All right. Thank you. Questions, comments from council?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yes, Council Marion.
Just actually a curiosity question. Does anyone off the top of their head if Hill Country News has a print version available or is it only an online newspaper?
I think we have an answer for you.
I'm pretty sure they have a print version. I'm pretty sure I've seen them at the convenience stores and at Lowe's.
supermarket all the time. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think my mic is working and I want to make sure everyone's able to hear this, so I'm going to speak kind of loudly. So please indulge me for a moment. I did reach out to the publisher for Hill Country News with all of the specific questions regarding the statutory requirements for being, to qualify as this newspaper, or our official newspaper. His response indicates their primary post offices in Cedar Park at 78613. However, they also intermail directly at the Lago Vista post office in Travis County. Therefore, they do qualify, they have paper delivery here.
Thank you. Anybody else in council? Council Prince?
First, I'll confirm as a remote participant that I was able to hear Ms. Silvera, so thank you for that. And then secondly, I'll say, I'm really glad to see this because when we were going through the charter review discussion, I actually tried to make the point that we don't have any real quote, you know, newspaper service out here and it's, it's difficult for us to follow the state law. And, you know, I, I was hoping we could get away with not having to publish in this, you know, non-existent paper. But I was corrected during those discussions and in fact, there's a state law, we have to follow it. And what I'm happy about here is that we found a way to, in a cost-effective manner, follow that state law, something in my mind is far more logical than publishing in the statesman. And, and there may be a side effect that as we do this with Hill Country News, they may, may choose to start covering Lago Vista more. So this could be, you know, additional benefit to us locally. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see this and I thank city staff for, for making these arrangements.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in council? All right. Did not have anybody signed up for this one from the citizens, but I believe I saw a hand come up in the audience. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of Councilman Prince's comments, he actually brought up a point I was going to make is that unfortunately, right now, Hill Country News doesn't give us any coverage. I reached out to them a few months back and asked, why don't they cover anything going on Lago Vista? And they attributed that to a lack of staff, simply put. And I'm wondering with, to, to Mr. Prince's point, you know, perhaps they'll start covering. How much, what will our, what do we anticipate our annual spend to be with Hill Country News?
That I could not tell you.
Do you think it's like a thousand dollars?
It all depends on what we have to publish and that comes in day to day, from week to week, depending on what comes in front of planning and zoning, our special meetings that we have to publish, like the ones for our budget workshop. So I would be remiss to tell you that I could give you an exact amount of that. It's all what we have to publish according to law.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to make a comment? All right. If that's everything, I will bring it back to council and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 21-1898, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, adopting the official newspaper of the city of Lago Vista as Hill Country News.
Second.
All right. I have the motion and the second from Council Sullivan. I know Council Marion keeps trying to get in, but with the delay, she's missing out. But officially, it'll go to Council Sullivan. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. All right. We're going to back out of our action items at the moment and we are going to go into our, going to go back to number five, which is our public hearing.
From the impact fees, right?
Number five. Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 21-1899, adopting the land use assumptions and capital improvement plan for the possible implementation of roadway impact fees. This resolution being requested is part of the roadway impact fee creation process. In accordance with the Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code, the city council must adopt the land use assumptions and capital improvement plan. As per the Texas code, the impact fee can only be assessed based on land use and capital improvements over the next 10 years. A public hearing will be held tonight for any additional public input. If approved, the process to consider the imposition of roadway impact fees will continue in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. If, if denied and desired in the future, roadway impact fees can be, can be considered again when the next mandated impact fee update is undertaken. And I will open the public hearing at 7:49 PM. Is there anything that staff would like to add to this summary?
No, not the consultants.
All right. So is there anything I've consulted?
I, I have a presentation. If there is business technology folks could make me a presenter, please.
You are now the presenter.
Let's see, I'm going to. Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you for the introduction to the, the potential imposition of, of roadway impact fees in Lago Vista. I say potential because Chapter 395, as you've correctly identified, contains a significant amount of both technical and administrative requirements that are needed to implement impact fee programs. It's a very deliberate technical process for defining land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, as building blocks to a second public hearing, which is the actual imposition of the impact fee. So this first, this meeting tonight, this public hearing tonight on, on the land use assumptions and capital improvements plans, I'll refer to them as LUACIP, is simply seeking your approval to the components for the roadway, roadway consideration. The land use assumptions will also be used by Jessica Vassar and her team for the update of the water wastewater impact fee program. We have been working with a capital improvements advisory committee. That committee is your planning and zoning commission, plus an ad hoc member there. We have been working with them. They approved the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plans through committee work. And so we are bringing this item before you for, as part of the public hearing for, and seeking approval. So the impact fee is, you know, as a basic bit of information, the impact fee is simply a one-time charge for new development coming to Lago Vista for their fair share of impact that they put on the infrastructure system. So it's new development, helping to share in the cost to provide service. So the demand, depending upon the size of any development proposal, whether it's residential, commercial, office, whatever, there's an associated impact that's going to be placed on the roadway, water and wastewater system, based on the amount of demand or capacity they consume. That's how a fee is calculated. So this LUACIP that we're presenting tonight is, again, the building blocks to a more formalized approach in which you all will decide by policy if new development should chip in on the cost of future facilities, specifically roads, water, and wastewater. By way of the, of the program development, we met with the capital improvements advisory committee to review growth rates, growth rates, based on how Lago Vista has been growing by a review of historic census data, building permit data, data from the previous and current comprehensive plans, the Campo Capital Area MPO forecast, water meter connections, and then also city staff input. We kind of created that synthesis for all those elements and to develop the growth rate that we then use to forecast a 10-year growth for Lago Vista for the years 2021 and through 2020, I'm sorry, 2031. By law, we're only looking at a 10-year window for this new growth that's going to be coming to Lago Vista. When I say new growth, this is growth that has not come to the city. So the impact fee program will not affect existing residents. This is simply the fee that's applied for future development coming to the community. So step one, develop the land use assumptions that informs the development of the capital improvement plans, subject to your approval. We would then take that information to develop a technical report that would be the calculation of the impact fee or the cost to provide service on a unit cost basis, and that would be a separate report. We have compiled the, both the LUACIP and the document dated August 2021, that's been available for the requirements of 395 for public noticing and the associated noticing in the paper, for anyone who'd like to review that prior to tonight's hearing. So we're here. I don't know. Can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay. So we're here in public hearing number one to review the LUACIP. Looking ahead, the, the targeted date for bringing, or the second public hearing is in November, and that's to consider the potential imposition of road impact fees. Regardless of whether you pass roads or not, the land use assumptions will be used for the water wastewater update that will be coming before you. Then the final action, if roads are approved, there's an ordinance associated with that that identifies a collection rate. That's all part of step two. We're not going to get into that, but we're going to stay here in step one. So land use assumptions, kind of high level here, is, is a 10-year forecast of how Lago Vista will grow. We look specifically at both population and employment because they have different generation factors by way of impact to roads or in the water wastewater system. So we look at, we look at each kind of growth component to help us with the forecast. Now, we have developed a service area structure for roads that divides Lago Vista into two service areas. I'll show that map here in a second. But more importantly, the land use assumptions for roads are confined to the city limits. By law, the road impact fees can only consider growth within the city limits, primarily because you're dealing with an open system of improvements. The water wastewater system also coincides with your city limits. So the, the LUACIP has been developed accordingly for water and wastewater consideration and for use in calculation of that cost to provide service. Again, the LUACIP forms the basis for CIP development to, since we're dealing with two service areas in Lago Vista, we have, there'll be a cost per servicing and ultimately, they'll be calculated for each service area. The land use assumptions then drive what we call roadway VMT or service units of growth. We use a service unit equivalent for four key components of residential and non-residential, residential being primarily single-family units, non-residential growth, looking at both commercial office and industrial growth. The, the service area structure that's depicted in the image, I mentioned that we have two service areas that have been defined for the Lago Vista program. Basically, Lakeshore down to, to Shoreline, Shoreline Ranch across Boggy Ford, over to National, down to Outpost, right in between Outpost Trace and Lakefront along the golf course. I think it's hole number one across the driving range. down to Outpost, right in between Outpost Trace and Lakefront along the golf course. I think it's hole number one across the driving range and then down to to the river. These are kind of physical barriers. And so we divided the community based on this, this structure and all the analysis has been predicated on these two service areas. So the land use assumptions, we convert pop and employment with service unit equivalents, both trip generation and trip length data to us to determine future service units of growth for roads, and that's the vehicle mile. What this table depicts here is kind of the breakdown of the twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty-one growth for each one of those components, how that translates to V M T, and then summarily, how that summarizes to forecasted growth within Lago Vista. There is a, the growth rate, we had a varying growth rate, a growth rate that was about five percent for the first two years of the ten-year window, followed by a three percent growth rate over the following eight years. We did that primarily in looking at your data. You know, you guys are clipping pretty quickly since twenty fourteen. You've added about thirteen hundred residential units, three hundred and seventy-one alone in twenty twenty-one, kind of at a pace of about thirty-nine percent, but it's been kind of leveling off. Don't, we didn't see that that pace continued forward. So we felt like we should kind of peel that back a little bit. And so we felt that over the next two years, you'll have a, some growth, and then it kind of levels off at the three-year, three-year pace. By law, the L U A has to be reviewed, the whole program has to be reviewed at least every five years. So if we project high or project low in five years, there'll be another look at it. Doesn't mean that you can't look at it any sooner, but you have to look at it at least every five years. If the advisory committee were to inform the city council that they should, we should look at the program earlier, they would simply, through a recommendation from the capital improvements advisory committee, make that recommendation to the council for a review at an earlier time. That's within their purview as the C I A C committee. So we have the ten-year forecast that we've converted to V M T. As I mentioned, it drives the development of the roadway capital improvements plan as correctly mentioned by resident there. Specific roads are eligible for consideration, that being arterial or collector class facilities from the thoroughfare plan, the recently approved thoroughfare plan. So we've identified that and those projects, this is what's depicted there on the map is simply the thoroughfare plan with the breakdown of service areas. We have specific projects that we're going to be identifying. Now, the impact fee C I P is different from other C I Ps. Monies that are collected from new development can only go to fuel the projects identified on this list. There's this map depicts the projects that have been identified. I'll go through those really quickly. Each one of these projects are defined to provide additional or new capacity. This is future capacity being made available to address growth. The law is written that the growth necessitated the necessitated growth and the impact associated, that is what's eligible for the impact fee. So we have roughly eight or ten projects. We have Lowman Ford from Dawn to Boggy Ford. Basically, that's the expansion from its current two-lane facility to the four-lane divided facility per your thoroughfare plan. So the program will consider two lanes, the additional or the two new lanes. We have a couple cleverly named roads here, New Road One from Dawn over to, I believe it's Buffalo Extension. We have a small segment of collector class facility, another collector class facility, New Road Two, and New Road Three kind of comprise these small projects here in the central part of Lago Vista. Foothill Cove from the existing segment of Foothill Cove swinging around to Barque Ranch and Briar Barnett Knoll from the existing roadway back to F M fourteen thirty-one. Those comprise the other collectors within, within service area one. In service area two, we have the expansion of Lowman Ford from Boggy Ford South to the city limits. Stuck with this segment here because we knew that there'd be some need for improvements here. But the improvement is strictly going to be the additional third lane, if you will. There's two lanes out there now. It's going to go to a three-lane section. So we're adding capacity via that third left turn lane. It's going to be a small amount of capacity, but yet it's improvements that are going to be needed as part of the expansion of this project. There are two intersection improvements. We have one here at F M thirteen one and Lowman Ford. These are simply, this is simply cost associated with expansion of that intersection. We're going to, we'll be making some estimates of cost, but things like utility relocates, potential signalization, things like that and associated with, or corner clips that are associated with that project, we would be adding. Now, fourteen thirty-one is a text dot road, but the city will most likely be contributing some costs for the facility. But we're going to be conservatively pointing only to those, to some costing associated with that intersection improvement. There is another intersection improvement down here at Boggy Ford and Lowman Ford. That will be that once the roadways expanded, the cost of the traffic signals, the new mast arms for that traffic signalization. Again, this, this intersection and then along with this project, we will be considering the city's portion of cost for those facilities. Okay. The total amount of capacity that's forecasted to be provided in the C I P, we've got, I'm sorry, this, this table depicts the ten-year demand based on the land use assumptions and the growth and the employment growth that translates to forecasted service units for roads or vehicle miles. We're forecasting about fifty-three hundred vehicle miles of growth within service areas one and two. Here are the breakouts that show both residential and a breakout of the employment categories compiling the vehicle miles by service area. And I guess, I think I failed to summarize the both population and employment growth. We had, we're forecasting five percent for two years, three percent for the following. Your current population is at about ninety-one hundred in twenty twenty-one. We, with the growth rate, we're forecasting an addition of sixteen hundred persons to a ten-year forecast of about twelve thousand seven hundred. And employment, you have current, current employment, a little over a thousand, adding about four hundred employment employees over the ten-year window to a twenty thirty-one employment level of about fourteen eighty-six. All of this is documented in the report and tables of various chapters there. That then informs this V M T calculation to derive what we're showing is the demand needed. We do that because we want to make sure we have enough capacity to cover forecasted growth. This table here depicts the projects by, by project name, its limits, length, the thoroughfare section per the thoroughfare plan, the lanes that are out there that are currently out there now, its proposed lane sections, and then really a kind of a summary listing of what we're doing. We're adding two lanes to Lowman Ford, constructing two lanes to the collector class facilities for projects two through seven intersection improvements, and then in service area two, the Lowman Ford expansion of that third two-way left turn lane, center turn lane. By way of summary, the amount of capacity that's being provided by the C I P, it totals to a little over six thousand service vehicle miles or service units of capacity. We did have some deficiencies that we identified in the network, primarily low, down on Lowman Ford and on, and some on Boggy Ford. We found some deficiencies in the P M P tower. That's, this whole system is predicated on the P M P tower. So we had some deficiencies. So we net that out of the overall capacity being made available. So we're dealing with net capacity that's made available to address future growth. So we do, of that total capacity, we have about fifty-seven hundred, almost fifty-eight hundred vehicle miles capacity being provided. The forecasted growth from the previous slide here by service area, you can see that we have plenty of capacity to system-wide cover the growth. In service area two, we're really only adding about a hundred and twenty-one vehicle miles of capacity. We have a forecasted demand of about twenty-one hundred in that whole, in the southern sector. We're going to be using all of that capacity over the ten years. And so ultimately, what that means is that the cost to provide service is going to be driven down, or it'll be, it'll be a very low cost to provide service. We do feel that at this time, the C I P is appropriate. There was discussion during the thoroughfare plan about the upgrade of this whole, the Boggy Ford loop. Don't, we don't see these improvements happening, at least within the first five years. We can always come back in and add it after year five. Or if something happens and there's a, there's a triggered improvement, these projects can be added into the program as simply as a recruitment project. Okay? We've identified the projects here. These are new, what we're calling new projects or projects that are planned to be implemented. All these projects will not fully be implemented over ten years, but the city will be actively expending dollars to implement these projects. Development can also chip in by way of paying for these improvements and they get credit against their impact fees. So if the development is, wants to chip in and build those projects, they can certainly do that. They'll get credit against the impact fees against their development proposal. So that's kind of a summary of the C I P. Again, all of this is highlighted in the August twenty twenty-one report. The next steps, if approved by you all tonight, the next steps would be to develop project costing for these projects, then do the cost per service unit calculation. Ultimately, in the, in the consideration of impact fees, most communities ask, well, what are other communities charging? What are their collection rates? So what we do is we do benchmarking. Other communities of similar size in the general area will show you what they're, they're currently collecting by way of their programs to help guide you all on the final decision of what you're going to ask new development to chip in. We will have one final advisory committee meeting to discuss with them the cost per service unit calculation and the benchmarking. We'll get their recommendation and comments before coming before the, before you all at that November public hearing on the potential imposition of the fee. With that, it's kind of an overview of the, the report. We are seeking council consideration and approval of the L U A and C I P as presented. But that'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious if you can help with some guidance around the selection of the roadways. And specifically, I'm thinking of Foothill Cove and the Burnett Knoll or whatever that Barnett Knoll. Those, and then the New Road Two and New Road Three. How did those rise to the level of being on this priority list?
So we looked at a couple of things. Number one, the forecasted growth that's anticipated to occur, development areas or area for future development where it may actually occur. And then also staff consideration as to what the potential needs might be. So that filing and in conjunction with the thoroughfare plan to identify those projects. So I mean, you know, yeah, you have your high school and, but there's still development opportunity in this area. So we felt like this, these kinds of projects create that linkage here would be certainly opportunities for implementing these roads. This little segment here of, I guess, in between New Road One and Two, it's technically outside your city limits. We could not consider that in the impact fee program. Your city limits change, that could be incorporated. But this was kind of the, you know, based on where development would likely occur, you know, we're only looking at the service area basis, not specifically down, drill down to the parcel level. But these projects were the ones likely to be implemented over time. As I mentioned earlier, they're not going to all be built at one time. It'll probably be phased improvements as development occurs. With impact fees, monies will trickle in as development occurs. And then as you all receive those, you can expend those toward implementing those projects. You can use other funds to implement those projects and then reimburse yourself with impact fee funds as they come in. But that's kind of the way that the finance tool works there.
So if I can follow up, please. So take a look at New Road Two and New Road Three. There's literally no development going on over there now. I know there's tons of proposed development over there. It's like, but why wouldn't we just let the developers of those subdivisions build those roads? And then Foothill Cove, I mean, the loop you're showing is, is over there near the Cedar Brakes facility. It loops around from one part to another, and there's, there's not likely to be any development over there other than maybe mahogany if that ever got off the ground. And people have been talking about that for twenty years, and it's never happened. So I'm just, I just, I'm still stumped at the selection of those two.
Right. Well, as this is, as you identified, this is undeveloped property and presents areas for potential development. True, development, if you all implement roadway impact fees, developer can build this road. Simply take it off the impact B C I P, we'd probably leave it on there so that way he can get his credit against his impact fee. But these are, these are built from the thoroughfare plan. Here's your little, here's Foothill, here's Barnett, Barnett Trail here, up to fourteen thirty-one.
But again, let Hines build that.
There's an existing segment built to more or less this point here. This is kind of that future extension in the connection of fourteen thirty-one.
But Foothill Cove, the loop you're talking about is around the Cedar Brakes facility where, which is city-owned that we use for effluent dispersal and the park.
Well, it's on your thoroughfare plan, and it shows that roadway facility long-term to be implemented. And so we're simply just using impact fees as a finance tool towards that implementation. If you don't feel that ought to be on there, we can always remove it, but this was the, the capital improvements advisory committee, they, they concurred with our recommendation. So that's what we're presenting before you tonight.
Mayor and Council, when you look at this proposed layouts, they are highly, highly schematic. It does not mean that we're actually going connected Foothill Cove. What it means is when the developer comes and develops, they're going to take that in consideration and city staff and city council will look at it if there's an alignment that makes sense, before example, connecting the large trail to the Tassera Parkway. If that's a possibility and going around that loop. So that, this is a schematic layout to where it's not setting stone. It could be a thousand feet away, but the point is to have that concept of a loop or a secondary access out through something happen, or something else. Granted, Foothill Cove, it's a steep drop-off. It could be a road that crosses over to Sarah. It could be a road that crosses over to Cedar Brakes and maybe to the old Barque Golf Course. We are talking to mahogany. We are talking to a developer that is looking to, probably shouldn't say, looking to develop some of these areas, including the golf course, but.
Heard that.
So that.
Heard that before.
We need to have.
At least a couple. But it may, may not happen, but now the real estate's.
If you, maybe just help me a little bit. What exactly is it that we're doing tonight? Are we designating these roads as roads that impact these could go to pay for in the future if we decide to? Or are we saying this is what we're going to do?
So tonight you're approving the land use assumption. So the thoroughfare plan is not something that you're approving, so that's already been done.
Right.
So what you're approving now is the land use assumption, as Eddie mentioned, and.
And this is associated C I P.
It's associated C I P project, so.
Now, Eric's correct. There could be changes to the C I P. It may be that Foothill Cove, we decide that that's something that may not happen, we can remove it. Conversely, there could be other projects that could be added to the program. So there's flexibility in that way, but the initial thinking was, you know, we have ten-year growth coming, so we're forecasting an additional sixteen hundred persons. So three, four hundred, four hundred dwelling units, more or less, over the ten years. And we've got some non-residential development that'll probably occur, probably along Lowman Ford somewhere. But we've got some growth that's anticipated to occur over ten years. And so these facilities are aimed at helping to implement the thoroughfare plan for long-term use and develop within the city.
So projects like Burnett Knoll and some of these projects in the development area, those are things that the developer will build. So it's not something that the city will go out there and build a major roadway in non-developed areas. And as Eddie mentioned, if, then in return, the developer doesn't pay a pro rider share of that impact fee.
And I think my main question is, is if we move forward with approving this tonight and things change over time, and we decide we want to do something differently, drop something, add things, you're telling us we have that ability to do that?
Yeah.
That is correct.
It only costs money to do.
Okay, well, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just asking a question because I had kind of a different take on this. Basically, what this is, is just something that we have to do and have to have so that we can go on down the road toward implementing an impact fee. This is one of the steps that's necessary so that we can. This is one of the steps that's necessary so that we can do that, to get that impact fee, to take care of things later on, but this is not setting in stone that this is where we're going to put this. This is just one of the things that we have to do, one of the steps we have to take to get to the point where we can have an impact fee.
Correct. Councilman, if we want to have an impact fee, so these sort of steps, so council member Sullivan was actually pointing out is some of the detail, some of the projects inside those steps, whether they were called for or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't want to speak too loud and so I think some huge problems with councilors. If, if it's, if I'm overspeaking, if I'm too loud, I want to make some clarifying points just to give you some context. To establish an impact fee, you have to have those two pieces. You have to have the CIP and you have to have the land use assumptions. The land use assumptions are going to tell you what we anticipate the growth to be in that particular area. So we're looking at, is there going to be additional use of the roads for roadway purposes? Is there going to be additional use of the roads? Is there going to be additional houses or businesses? So that's part of that. The CIP is something you cannot fund, fund projects out of an impact fee, whether it's roadway or otherwise, if the project is not in the CIP. Now, we don't anticipate that we, although we think, although we know at this point, we anticipate there will be a growth in those areas and the roads they've identified may be impacted until you get to the point where you're going to utilize those funds for actual development of the roads or to be used as credit or the development in those roads. It's not as critical. At the time you, you utilize the CIP funds, the project that you're using those funds for has to be in the CIP. So Eric is correct. Eddie is correct. He's, sorry, I should probably shake. I'm assuming you go by Eddie. Provides some clarifying points, but tonight it's important to identify some projects and, because you have to have that CIP to do this step. But you do have the authority at any time to revise your CIP or road or water waste water, either one. But at the point you want to use that money, use those funds, that project has to be in the CIP. So a deeper dive, a closer look will have to be made closer to the time that we really anticipate having to use the funds. Now, the funds that'll be collected when you establish, assuming you establish a roadway, roadway impact fee can only be used in that service area. So you can't collect funds, say in the blue area number two and use them for roads in area number one. Because the amount of money that you're going to collect, the amount of impact fee that you, you establish is based on the amount of anticipated growth and use of the roads or water waste water infrastructure, needed infrastructure or that new growth. So only the new stuff that's built after the impact fee is established is going to be used, could be used for only those new properties are going to be subject to the impact fee. And then only those projects in the CIP, at the time you want to use the money can be used for that project. So if we have to make changes, we have time to do that. You'll have to go through an analysis. You have to have proper folks do that analysis. So we will, I think Eric alluded to, it takes money, so you'll have to have the analysis, but it is possible to do that. So hopefully that helps clarify the question you have.
But wouldn't.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So wouldn't some of that depend on the developer that you know is coming into a particular area? So such as Sunrise coming in with Firefly or Shoreline Ranch coming, trying to come in. Once their project is approved and they notify you that they're going to begin building, wouldn't that be added to the CIP at that time?
It is possible to revise your CIP once you have better data about what's actually being built.
Okay.
The land use assumptions that are, that were created utilize information that we have that Roy and Eric have based on what we anticipate builders to, to build, the areas that we expect to build now. We have, we, you know, these guys deal on a daily basis with the developers who are coming to us who are saying, we want to develop this area, this area. These are all the proposed projects that we want to do. Based on that information and other data that we have historically, they look at that to develop what your land use assumptions are going to be, where we think we can grow and will grow.
Right.
But you will dial in on that information in more detail when you get closer and as we revise the CIP that's specific for each of those service areas.
And I'm assuming that as we get closer to actually executing on those projects, we'll vote as a council to allocate impact fee dollars for various projects in the CIP? Or are we doing that right now?
No, you are not allocating.
Okay, okay.
During the budget process, remember when we came to you in the CIP and we told you what funding sources we're going towards, that's when you will do that.
Okay.
And that is evaluated every year during the budget process. So just because we have a CIP project now doesn't mean, and we've got it in 22, 23, doesn't mean it will stay there. It may move. It may stay there depending on what we have available with our funding sources, which includes the impact fees.
Okay. And then one more follow-up, if I could. You talked about the fact that the money's collected in, in one, can't go to pay for things in two and vice versa. Well, you've got a confluence there at Boggy and Lowman where one meets two at those roads and, and this road. Can they, can both, money from both go to help that intersection?
Yeah, the, the, the costing of that intersection improvement is actually going to be split between the two service areas. So technically there'll be funds from each bank account fueling that intersection improvement.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Eddie, feel free to correct anything if I was off cue.
I'm good. So where are we?
Right. Anybody else? I'm sorry if. Paul Prince, being your hand, Councilman Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. Several questions. One, one, I would just like to make a statement for purposes of citizens, which you actually made, Mr. House, earlier in the meeting. But I think it's worth just reiterating. I think a lot of our citizens see cement trucks driving up and down Lowman and around Boggy and creating potholes and tearing things up. And our citizens think we should be able to charge an impact fee for the roads that are being destroyed. But the state says, as I understand it, that we cannot do that. And so I just wanted to kind of make that an explicit comment and, you know, you're nodding your head. So, you know, that's, that's, I think, correction to a misunderstanding that many citizens have.
The, the law is very specific with the relate, with the relation to use of funds only for new capacity versus using it for operations and maintenance, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then secondly, and this kind of fits into the, you know, our, our crystal ball is not perfect, these, these kind of questions. So we don't know exactly what the growth rate is going to be. We don't know exactly which road projects will do within the five window, a five-year window. And I'm trying to get a handle on, you know, how, how accurate do we need to be in our forecasting? And especially around the growth assumptions, because I, I think frankly, and, and I'm, I'm on the, the utility subcommittee, so we've been having the same discussion. And, and I'm really interested in this assumption of five-year growth in year one, 5% growth in years one and two, and then 3% beyond that. What if we're way under calling it and it's a lot more than that, you know, are we, it's, I, I think our objective, or at least my objective as a council member would be, let's collect as much in road impact fees, and for that matter, water and wastewater impact fees, as we legally can, and then put that money to, to good use within the city. And I'm just wondering if we under call either number of projects on our plate in the CIP or we under call growth rate, are we leaving potential money on the table that we, we will have a hard time getting in the next few years?
So the, the calculation is predicated on a, on a unit cost basis. So looking here at the service area one, we're going to be using about 50, of that CIP that's been identified on that map. We're going to be using about 50% of that capacity that's available from those projects. Since we're on a unit cost basis, if we were undershooting growth or overshooting growth, we have plenty of movement where that cost per service unit shouldn't really change that much. Now where it'd be a factor would be in service area two, because we're, we're chewing up all that capacity with the 10-year growth. That drives that cost per service unit down. It could pull it back up. But, but that's why the law requires that you review the impact fee program at least every five years. Not only one for the growth and the projects that are in there, but then projects that are completed. You know, we'll be developing cost estimates for these projects and what it's going to take to put these, these projects on the ground. But if projects are built, we've got to put the actual costs in there. So we'll be generating cost estimates on the conservative side. And then the reason for that is we don't want to put the city in a potential refund situation. If, if we overshot it or added a lot of contingencies and the project came in at, you know, three quarters of the, of the estimate that we developed. So we will, we'll be very conservative in that project costing. So, but to get back to your original question, it, 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 it does have an effect in, as I pointed out in service area two. But since you're on a unit cost basis and you're reviewing it every at least five years, if not sooner, then you have some safeguards in there on that the service unit shouldn't really change that much. It will though in service area two, because we are consuming all that capacity.
Okay. And then a, a follow-up on a real specific project, and Mr. Sullivan mentioned a few specific ones up in service area one. In service area two, we just recently had a discussion with, as somebody referenced with Sunrise on the Firefly development. And there's some, some known things that have to be addressed on Boggy Ford, just off of Lowman associated with that. It would seem to me that those, while, you know, upgrading all of Boggy Ford, we can have that debate whether that happens in the five-year window or not, but I, I think some of the things real close to Lowman on Boggy, I'm, I'm really surprised those are not on the list here. Can you maybe address that?
Yeah. So it was, it was our understanding that the Boggy Ford improvements are going to be through developer agreement. Those were going to be driven through them. So that's why we excluded that. There was uncertainty as to what might be the city's portion. We didn't want to get into a sticky situation there. We can always come back in and add it later. So in other words, if the city in fact contributed some pride cost along here, we can recoup that cost for, or the cost of excess capacity. Now, if you're referring to the, the loop, if you will, from the thoroughfare plan discussion, that the thought here is that this is probably going to be beyond five years. So we felt like, ah, let's keep that off the radar at this time. Certainly can come in there and add it later if things change. But we felt like for the initial program, we wanted to focus on new facilities and lane improvements on, on Lowman Ford and some of the, the key growth areas.
Okay, thank you. And my last question. Given that there's some lack of flexibility in funds crossing the service areas, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what, what are the rules around service areas? Could we have made the entire city a single service area so we had more flexibility? Or for that matter, why did we select two, not four or, or, or one?
Yeah. Yeah. So the reason for service areas is to ensure, as the city attorney pointed out, to ensure that, that monies are expended in the area where new development's occurring. You're not collecting money on the north side and spending it all on projects on the south side or vice versa. That's why you have service areas and the service areas can't be any greater than six miles. So we looked at, we couldn't get Lago Vista in one full service area. We knew there was going to be a break somewhere. You know, we were looking originally at the Dawn area, but because of the city limits and what's going on here, we wanted to establish firm physical city boundaries. So that, you know, once you set these things, you know, that's how you're collecting, that's how you're expanding to make any change to the service area structure. And we talked about this with the advisory committee. Making any change to the service area structure is really kind of a big bookkeeping issue. Like for example, if we moved it from along here up to here, then any monies that were collected in this area, we have to have a set of books of what we collected and we had another set of books of how it was moved to the other side. So it became, comes, becomes kind of an administrative headache. So, but you know, we visited with staff at, you know, at the very outset of the project of the service area structure and we, we came up with this, this development scenario, the service area scenario. And so that's what we've been using this whole time, quite honestly.
Anybody else? Can't see Councilman Marion. There's your hand. I can see it.
Thank you, Mayor. I have actually just a couple of quick questions. My first has to do with Lowman Ford from Dawn to Shoreline Ranch and wondering if adding two lanes to the existing roadway there would have any impact on the integrity of Lowman Ford, since it's just been newly paved? That's one question. Another one has to do with the projected on page three dash seven, the projected growth rate of about 3% per year. Given that last year it was closer to 10% and just wondering if we really think that's, you know, accurate enough. I know we want to be conservative, but probably not overly conservative. And then the last question, and I'm scrolling in my document here, apologize for looking for my note. The last question I had is if there could just be some clarification stated, I believe it's true that developments like Firefly or the one slated to go in at the end of American at some point. Even though those are older developments as far as when they were approved, they've gone through name changes perhaps, but they would still be bound or, or we could still apply impact fees to those developments because they have not yet platted the land. And I just wanted to make that or ask staff to confirm that. So that in case citizens are wondering if those developments can, if we can recoup some impact fees from those, those developments, we can confirm that that is the case.
Okay. So number one, Lowman Ford. So there's been some existing improvements. So the, the concept is that ultimately this is going to be upgraded to that four-lane divided section per year thoroughfare plan. So we'll, we're developing a cost for really the, the full facility, but then we're going to be apportioning out the, the half for the other two lanes. Now, we recognize there could be some engineering involved, but this is our, our estimate for, or will be our estimate for what it'll take to get that to a, its ultimate facility. Okay. So we won't have the true, the ultimate engineering answer at this time, but a planning level cost for what it'll take to get that to ultimate standard. With regards to the growth rates, yeah, we, we have revisited that several times. Initially, we had a, an 8% for a first three years and then dropped that to 5%. Then after kind of reviewing some of the, the permits, how things are leveling off a little bit, we thought, well, maybe that was a little bit too, too aggressive. Let's, let's fall back a little more conservative. That's where we went back to that five and, and 3%. But again, we'll be looking at that at least every five years. So if things all of a sudden take off, maybe that becomes the trigger to, hey, let's take a look at the, the L U A again and update the program. The, the final question is with regards to older facilities, are they subject to the fee? So the, the way the program has implemented, previous developments that have been platted are, are grandfathered, they're grandfathered for up to one year. They had, in other words, when the, if the program's adopted January one, then you've got, you mentioned like an, an older development, Firefly or something like that. If they don't pull a building permit within one year, they are subject to the fee. Okay? Any new development that comes in, let's say you adopted in November, but you want to, you want to say the active date for the program becomes January 1, 2022 by policy. Then anything that comes in after that point is subject to the fee. Okay? Older development is subject to it if they don't pull a permit within one year of that grandfather of the program going, coming into play. Now, policy, there can be specific policy. I keep bringing this up. We're going to go through a lot of technical work to get to the cost to provide the unit cost of service. Okay? It'll be then a policy decision on what you want to collect. So we're going to define, let's say it costs $1,000 a service unit. Because we're crediting the program by 50%, we're not going to be. the program by 50%, we're not going to be going to the ceiling, you, the council will be considering up to 50% collection rate. That'll be a policy-driven decision. The advisory committee, they'll be probably having a comment on that, on what it ought to be, but ultimately you'll take that under advisement, and then you all will decide what fair share should new development contribute. So if you decide, you know what, we think we should start low and ramp up because we're nice guys, we'll start with 10% of max, and then every year over the first five years, we'll increase it by 5%. That's a policy-directed decision on how you want new development to chip in on that cost. The other thing you got to remember is, these projects, there's going to be costs associated with it. If you're going to ask new development to chip in, any reduction or offset you give them, who's going to pick the other half up, or the other, more than the other half? The other half of the equation is your existing tax base. So you'll need to weigh that as your community leaders on what you want to ask new development to pay. Okay? Hopefully that kind of addresses your three questions there.
Anybody else? Let's see. All right. Well, now, this is a public hearing, so I will go to our audience at the moment. I have two people who have signed up to speak, to make comments. The first one is Ms. Susan Teal. Sarah Teal, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it took a minute for my microphone. Over the last few days, I took the time to really dig into the impact fee document in tonight's agenda and look back through the process that the impact fee committee took to come up with the new CIP projects that are being presented tonight. As I read through Friesen Nichols' report, I came to understand why a number of the CIP projects are on that list, especially the ones on Loman and Boggy Ford, since the consulting firm found existing deficiencies there. I am less clear on why more than half of those CIP projects are in areas that do not indicate deficiencies. I'm especially curious about the Burnett Knoll and Foothill Cove new road projects, since they account for almost half of the miles, appear to serve only lakeside at Tassera, and are laid on top of some of the trails that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee asked the city council to protect when they made their annual presentation at the July 15 council meeting. It is unclear to me, after reading the report, why these roads were included and who suggested that these be put on the 10-year CIP list. They don't seem to be data-backed like the others. And then just additionally, I understand putting that in to inform the collection, but I worry that if those get left on the list, even if they're not going to be done, they'll get lost in history, like many things on like the comprehensive master plan, or when things were done with the waste management, and Counselor Sullivan brought up how there had been like a plan, and then that was being shifted. I'm worried that if this Foothill Cove and the Barnett get left on, that they'll just get done later, because nobody remembers what was really supposed to happen with them. So, thank you.
You bet, you bet. Couple of comments there. Concern on, you identified deficiencies on Loman and Boggy. Yes, we accounted for those. Deficiencies are taken into consideration. So by service area, we're identifying projects, the capacity being made available, then we're taking, we're netting out traffic that is already out there, number one, and there's zero, because all these are new projects. In other words, we're not recouping any excess capacity. So they're all new lanes, but we're saying summarily, if there's any deficiencies within that service area, we're just netting it out. In other words, leaving us leftover CIP that can be used for future growth. So we do that to stay on the conservative side, number one, but then more importantly, number two, we have a pure unit cost to provide service for roads. Now, there was the other comment about developers, the Barnett Knoll and the Foothill, you know, those projects on your thoroughfare plan, development is actively going on or planned to go on in that area. So the idea there is if the development continues and the developer wants to get credit, he builds those roads and wants to get credit for it, then it needs to be in the impact fee CIP. If it's not in the impact fee CIP, technically you could say, well, you know what, it's not on the program, we're not going to give you credit. But that's not the, we want to have some transparency here. The goal of the impact fee program as a tool, a finance tool, is to implement your thoroughfare plan. And so that's why these projects are rooted in the officially adopted thoroughfare plan. So it is our forecast that there may be some, because there's still a lot of developable area in the northwest, a lot of developable area in the Dawn area, in the center part of the city, that there's likely that new growth is going to occur. And so we're identifying projects that could help facilitate access and circulation to where these future growth areas are. Now, whether you worry about things getting lost, well, the idea is, I mean, this impact fee CIP, yeah, it can be amended from time to time to add or remove or whatever. We want to try to, you know, have something fairly accurate, but we think long-term, these roads are going to be implemented. Now, are they going to be implemented on its exact alignment as depicted? No. Your thoroughfare plan shows general intent of where corridors are going to be located, and it's the idea that you make that loop, if you will, the Foothill loop, and it's that intent that you make that connection from Knoll Trail or Barnett Knoll all the way up to 1431. It could have a different alignment based on engineering, et cetera. But the idea is that if that gets developed, whether it's development-driven or the city participates or initiates any of these new roads, that they need to be on the impact fee CIP.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next I have Ms. Darcy DeVoe.
Darcy DeVoe, Travis Drive. First off, I thought we were discussing number 11, but then we jumped back up here to five, and I didn't see the one that was the road that was supposed to go from Bonanza up behind the property here to loop up onto Loman Ford. I don't see that in the pictures now. And then, so I don't know where that went to. And then I would also like to make sure that somebody does talk to Turnback Canyon people, they have been working years on their project, and these roads will probably really affect what they're doing up there, these two roads up here in the corner. And wasn't there in the plan on page 41, a map that showed some road going from Bonanza through this property over here? I think it was supposed to be the old road that the ESD had, but now it's showing that it's going to be a road, and it's never been discussed. So that was in your packet, and now it's not in here anymore. So I'd just like to know where that went to. Thank you.
So, let's see, the first new road, Dawn to the Bonanza extension, the thought there is that, sorry, going the wrong way here, there's probably going to be some development likely to occur. This is out of the city limits, that's why we have kind of this unique little, last little connection here. But the idea was, if development occurs and this gets implemented, we want to make sure we have a connection point. This aligns with your thoroughfare plan, and the connection is there. And so we've simply included that in the program.
Is that the road? I will ask somebody on the staff, is that the road that goes through the five and a half acres of trees that were cut down? I want to know that. Is that the road? Because Bonanza, you bought the property on Bonanza right behind City Hall. You bought that, the cul-de-sac, and you were going to extend that road for the Green Center, so you would have an in and out. Now, if it gets extended all the way up to Loman Ford, where is that project and why hasn't ever been brought forward, is what I'm asking.
So, right now, there is, if I'm not mistaken, there is a easement or through that area, there is no road project planned right now, but.
We bought that property. When I was, before I got on council, I was, I worked with Mr. Mosen Anami, he's the one that owned the two parcels that was the end of that cul-de-sac. We bought part of it so that we could then connect to that road that Darcy's talking about.
The municipal way.
But, and I think the reason why that particular roadway is not on here is because it's outside the city limits, and it has to be inside the city limits to be considered.
And the connection that has occasionally been discussed has been in that property on the outside of city limits with potential people who are going to develop that property, right? Not through any property that's owned by the city.
Right.
The only thing that's planned per se is extending municipal weight and connecting it to Bonanza, and that's the end of it.
Yeah. And if I might, maybe one more comment with regard to what Darcy had to say. Over there on the Foothill Trails, area Foothill Cove, excuse me, but I was over there with Carl multiple times, and the problem is that road doesn't actually go where it shows on the map. It ends, and then it's a steep drop-off, and so quite frankly, we talked about the city extending the roadway down there, just so you could have a parking lot, so you could access the trails. So part of what we're doing there could actually help with getting access to that property, getting access to the trail system down there. So just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, and there's a school district has property back in there too, so there's more that's out there, it's just not depicted because it's not in the city limits. All right, well, that is all that I have signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who would like to address council? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you mind going back to the slide with the map, please, sir?
You bet.
Thank you very much. I understood you to say, I understood the presenter to say that the geographical regions they've defined between one and two is very important. Is it relevant to those, the dividing thereof, to keep it consistent with, say, for example, property ownership? I say that because as I look at the map, I see areas where I know that there is, I'm looking, for example, there at Loman and Boggy, where you have Lakeshore Ranch and Old Austin Boulevard, that little that goes behind the fire station that's been closed, that road, that's what you see right there. Everything northwest of Lakeshore Ranch is still part of Shoreline Ranch, you know, Atlas, there's some property there on the hilltop, that's all part of Marshall's Harbor still. Does it, is that relevant that you've got a single piece of property being split up by the map?
I assume you're referring to right in here, where I'm pointing?
Yes, sir.
So that's along the existing roadway, the Shoreline Ranch?
Yes.
So we just, as a physical boundary, because we kind of avoid property lines, because what you're alluding to, property sale, things like that, subdivision of land, then that line goes away, and so that's why we say the physical boundaries, and so the existing road here, that's what we felt most appropriate.
Coming into the meeting, I was thinking to myself, gosh, like Paul Prince alluded to, why not try to capture as much impact fees as is possible? But I understood you to say that it's actually very important that we be conservative with the numbers. Would you mind explaining just briefly why we need to be conservative and not capture more?
Yeah, so you're, it's called, it's an exaction. It's an exaction against development. You're saying as a condition of development, you're going to pay impact fee. You know, this is, in addition to whatever else they're going to be dedicating, that's all an exaction. You know, and it's all predicated on cost. And so if the actual cost of some of these projects come in a lot lower than what's anticipated, and you've got this cost per service unit that's calculated on that cost of the CIP, it then, it puts the city in a potential refund situation, and that's what we want to specifically avoid. For example, the cost of right-of-way, cost of right-of-way can be very expensive, upwards of, you know, up to $5 a square foot, if not more. We're going to be like ultra-conservative, and we're going to be assuming of probably about a dollar a square foot, something that's extremely conservative, because we just, again, don't want to subject the city to refunding developers for impact fees. So, but we know how that game can be played, and so, but we'd rather stay on the conservative side. If we were to say, yeah, we feel pretty confident that it's going to be $5 a square foot, and then something changes, and who knows, devaluation of land, or who knows what, we don't, you know, then we've made a mistake and we shot high. So it's always best to come in low. I don't know ultimately where the council will be on, in terms of a collection rate, you know, if you are going to be seeking that 50% maximum or not, but if by policy decide to collect less, then it really doesn't matter, because you're not collecting the maximum anyway. Now, if ultimately there's the desire to go above 50%, then there's the finance study that would be required. We talked about this with staff at the outset, and the feeling was, for a new roadway impact fee program, probably would not consider going above that 50%. Probably we would be considering going in conservative on collection rates, only because it's a new program. But maybe in the first update, maybe we do that finance study to find out what that ceiling is. In other communities that the study's been done, it can go anywhere from about 80 to 95% of the full amount. In other words, let's say Loman Ford, it's $2 million. Well, in the CIP, we're going to be crediting it by 50%, only because we don't anticipate going above a 50% collection rate. So the whole program is going to be predicated on a 50% credit for this initial program. Say in the update, we do that finance study, and we determine that we could charge up to 90%, well, that seal, that bar raises to 90%. So if the desire was to collect it, the 90% of the 100% or the full amount, then that would be in the purview of the decision-making there.
I just wanted to jump in to say that the 50% is a requirement of chapter 395. You either have to take the 50% credit or do the detailed credit analysis.
Anybody else? We're still in the, okay, I'm still in the audience. If there's nobody else in the audience, I'll bring you back in. Councilman Prince?
I think we beat the dead horse.
Go ahead, Councilman Prince.
Okay, thank you. I guess the thing that I'm most uncomfortable with here is that all, vast majority of all of the planned CIP activity is in service area one. And, you know, just, I'll say again, the number's shown in here, a lot of growth in service area two, but no development plan. And that's just really counterintuitive. And I, you know, I understand that Mr. Haas, you're just saying, hey, this is the road plan you guys approved, but I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Sullivan as well, is my own feelings is, maybe our road plan isn't as accurate as it should be, because we got a bunch of growth that's been happening and will continue to happen in service area two, and yet we're not showing any roads that, you know, take advantage of an impact fee. And I'll just say, for example, there's probably 150 to 200 homes that were built in this service area two in the last 12 months, and that's impacting all of this green area of Loman Ford traffic, for example. So a lot of the traffic that's being generated in service area two ultimately would be traveling through Loman Ford area, you know, which is a service area one impact fee. So all of those homes that, if I'm understanding correctly, all those homes that are building on existing platted lots in service area two, we have no hope of ever collecting impact fees from the developed brown homes or whoever that's developing several hundred homes per year in that area, because we're not attributing any projects to the service area two. So that just doesn't feel right to me, and I'm just trying to think through, you know, what are potential solutions? If that Loman Ford work was split in half, and the blue service area went up to include new road number three, and then somehow cut across so that, you know, the Loman Ford was half service area one and half service area two, to me, it seems like that would address that concern, because right now, we've just got, as you showed and said in your earlier comments, we're at 100% in your math on service area two, and if we get that wrong, you know, it's kind of a bad guess. So I'm just trying to figure, is there a way for us to do a better guess for service area two, so we don't work ourselves in a bad corner here?
Okay, so number one, the platted properties. So by law, you know, they will be grandfathered as long as they pull their permits, their building permit within one year. their building permit within one year of the implementation of the of the roadway program. After that one year, they're subject to the fee. That will be policy decision. The concern about getting that wrong on the unit cost calculation, well, we we are, we are, we know there's going to, there's growth in Service Area Two. But we also know that, you know, that Bogey Ford, as part of this development, is there was either developer agreement or some agreements in place that that's going to get implemented by the developer. So we didn't want to include that in in the potential that that the city wasn't going to be participating in that. But, you know, that can always come back in later. We can add that in later. We, the whole program that we developed is predicated on this service area structure that we've identified, all the land use assumptions, everything. So if there's the notion of potentially changing this, well, we got to go back and redo the work.
Mayor and Council, I just want to add a couple of points. I'm going to be talking a lot about Bogey Ford. One of the things that we had, a lot of implementations for Bogey Ford expansion were not to add capacity but to address safety. So those, even if Bogey Ford were all to fully be developed, it's not that it accommodates additional growth or it accommodates additional capacity, it simply addresses safety concern like an additional of center turn lane or a third lane. A third lane is not a traveled lane to where you can accommodate additional passes. So therefore, there's not a lot that you can, you you cannot use that as part of your, we cannot use that as part of the Impact V C I P. So we wanted to address that. On this one, yes, there's development going on on south side. There's quite a bit of development going on on the north side also that those projects will be paid for and and will go towards. This was a physical barrier that it made sense a lot to city staff and to consultants where use of Bogey Ford, Lowman Ford intersection and then roadway along Bogey Ford and Shoreline. The other location where it made sense, it had to be a physical barrier, was along Dawn Drive. But then all of a sudden, you have all this development on the south side and very little, very few projects on the north side. And you have quite a bit of development also going on on the north side. So it's kind of like being in a rock and hard place here, but it's, that's what made more sense to us.
Right, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, well, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at nine oh one P M. And I will bring it back to council for discussion and possible action.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty one dash eighteen ninety nine. Second.
All right, I have the motion and a second, but Counselor Williams, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. And we will go to number eleven. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding resolution number twenty one dash nineteen hundred. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Laguna Vista, Texas, scheduling a public hearing to consider adoption of the impact fees for roadway facilities, directing the city secretary to publish notice of said public hearing and establishing effective date. This public hearing is a requirement of the continuing process mandated by the Texas Local Government Code for the city council to be able to consider the adopting for impact fees for roadway facilities. Question, do we have to specify a date?
I think it's specified in the resolution.
I know we talked about November fourth, but
I believe it's in there.
It's in there.
Yep, sure is.
Let him print that page out.
And it also talks about that they have to have copies of the Impact B report available to the public by October fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, other than what we just had?
No.
All right, I don't have anybody from the audience signed up on this one. Does anybody care to make a comment on the scheduling of the public hearing? All right, I'll bring it back to council and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty one dash nineteen hundred.
All right, I have the motion and the second, but Counselor Williams, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Schedule that public hearing. And we go to number twelve, which is basically the same thing, except it's water and wastewater. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding resolution number twenty one dash nineteen oh one. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Laguna Vista, Texas, scheduling a public hearing to consider adoption of impact fees for water wastewater facilities, directing the city secretary to publish notice of said public hearing and establishing an effective date. This public hearing is a requirement of the continuing process mandated by the Texas Local Government Code for the city council to be able to continue collecting impact fees from water and wastewater facilities. Again, I don't have this resolution. Is it the same date?
Yes, sir, same day, yes, sorry, four.
All right. Anything we need to add? Jessica, did you have anything you needed to add?
I do not.
Wastewater person.
No, I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions.
All right, any comments, questions? Anybody from the audience on this public hearing date? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty one dash nineteen zero one.
All right, and we reversed it. Counselor Williams made the motion and Counselor Sullivan seconded this time. Any further discussion? Karen, then the all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. And as a final note, rest in peace, Norm MacDonald, one of my favorite comedians. And I will call this meeting adjourned at nine oh five P M.
Thank you, guys, good night.